Welcome to the September 25th, 2024 meeting of the Downers Grove Public Library Board and Trustees. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Glacial San Andreas, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We acknowledge that the Downers Grove Public Library sits on the unceded, traditional, and ancestral homelands of Native peoples. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the indigenous peoples who have been caretakers of the land throughout generations, past and present. We invite you to learn more about the genocide and forced displacement by non-native settlers and the ongoing injustices against Native peoples. Hey, can proceed with your call.
Trustee Doherty?
Here.
Welcome back. Trustee Humphries?
Here.
Trustee Kuntia?
Here.
Trustee Slaydeck?
Here.
Trustee Topic?
Here.
President Gagani?
Here.
All right, item number four is our consent agenda. On this agenda is the August 28th, 2024 regular meeting minutes and the September 2024 invoices.
I will make a motion to approve the 2024 regular minutes, the August and invoices.
Second.
You have a motion and a second to approve the items on the consent agenda. I'll open the floor up to any discussion. All right, let us go ahead and take a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Slaydeck?
Yes.
Trustee Topic?
Yes.
President Gagani?
Yes. All right, item number five is financial matters, the August 2024 financial report.
And as you can see, as of the end of August, we are two-thirds of the way through the year. We have collected 55.5% of our revenue. We do still have the second payment of our property tax cycle yet to be posted in September, and 58.9% expended so far through August. As you can see, unfortunately, special legal continues to lead our overspend at 276%. That was a total through the end of August of $13,844.20, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'll move to approve the financial matters presented.
Actually, you don't have to approve the financial. Yeah, the financial reports just go into the record as part of the board packet, and the invoices have been approved, and that's the part that needs approval.
Can I, I'm gonna ask, can you just flesh out what special legal means?
Okay. For us, that's anything attorney, because we are on the village of Downers Grove's financial system, they have in-house legal counsel, and so all of their regular legal fees are paid through salaries, et cetera. And so the budget line is called special legal because it is when the village has to go outside of their in-house counsel to receive legal help. It's, it's one of those weird things about using the village's financial, we use their budget lines.
Okay, so for us, it's normal.
Yeah.
Well, it's predominantly FOIA-related.
Yes, and predominantly FOIA and the OMA challenges that we had earlier in the year. Yes.
And we had one investigation last year of an employee situation.
Correct.
Where there was a potential conflict of interest, so we went to an outside firm.
The majority of that was in the 2023.
I think that was 2022.
Yes. And what's the other thing? Oh, all of the attorney reviews of the policy pieces are also part of special legal.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions regarding the financial matters? All right, perfect. Item number six is public comments. Before I open the floor, I wanted to just remind everyone of a few things. Public comment portion of this meeting is meant to be an opportunity for you, the public, to provide comments and feedback about the Downers Grove Public Library to the Downers Grove Public Library Board and Trustees. The public comment portion of the meeting is 30 minutes long, and as usual, we'll evaluate this at the 30-minute mark and extend time if we feel it's needed. Speakers, you're asked to limit your comments to three minutes, but you have a maximum of five minutes, and if you're representing a group, please limit your comments to one speaker for your whole group. And please refrain from applauding or clinging in any side conversations. So with that said, I'll open up the floor. You can come on up.
My name is Maria Stewart.
Oh, please go to the podium.
Yes, I've been here before.
I just wanted to say, my name is Maria Stewart. I've been a resident for 30 years, and I just wanted to thank the library for wonderful work, and they've always been very accommodating and insightful and helpful, so I just wanted to say thank you for all your hard work, and I appreciate it. Hopefully, I'll be here another 20 years. Okay.
Good evening. My name's Celine Briner, and I'm a resident. Recently, there was a Great Decisions topic on Project 2025. The display table on the second floor displayed articles to be discussed. Prominently displayed is Project 2025, Donald Trump's Albatross. Also, fact-checking warning from Democrats about Project 2025 and Donald Trump is a second article, and there are more. Most people will not read the articles, but will see the table and do a mental connection between Project 2025 and Donald Trump. FYI, Project 2025 is a Heritage Foundation document that has nothing to do with Donald Trump or his campaign. Actually, it was written first in 2023. This is clear electioneering in the library. I dare say the flip of this would never be allowed. A FOIA turned up an email between Karen Banerak, library staff, and Ron and Norma Solberg, creators of The Great Decisions. Ron and Norma say, and we've got some oh-so-timely subjects coming up. Note especially that we're giving you a link for information on Project 2025, our September 25th discussion. We're doing so because it's coming up big time during this presidential campaign and upcoming Republican convention, and it's unclear whether or not candidate Trump and Republicans really supported. So this display is put up, giving the clear impression of a link between Project 2025 and President Trump. This is perpetrating a lie. This is electioneering in the library. It should not be allowed. Realize that most people will walk by and see the table with Project 2025 and Trump's Albatross and take a mental snapshot. Electioneering should not be allowed at the library. I hope the board will speak with the director to make sure nothing like this occurs in the future. On September 12th, I called Jen Radejuski to discuss the table. She said she was not familiar with it and would call me back, which she did. On the call back, she said she didn't see the documents I was talking about on the Great Decisions table, so I thought the papers were removed. I stopped by the table on September 13th to check the table, and all the documents were there. Wow, what a surprise. I called Jen, and she called me back from somewhere outside the library. When I said I didn't understand our discussion of the day before because all the documents were right there on the table, she was not surprised and did not even try to explain how that could be. Jen had lied to me about the documents the day before, a bold-face lie. How can the Assistant Director lie like that to a patron and a taxpayer? This is the height of disrespect. Untruthfulness destroys trust and community. Truth is a sign of respect regardless of political view. We have EQDG at the village council talking about hate in Downers Grove. I find this disrespect shown to me a manifestation of hate. I want the board to reprimand Ms. Radejuski and put it in her personal file. I'd like to remind you of past lies from the director and assistant director. Jim Wool was lied to about the window painting policy that did not exist. Ed Briner was lied to about an intoxicated person in the children's room, and now lying to me about articles on the Great Decisions table. It's time for the board to weigh in. Thank you.
My name's Cal Christie. I'm a resident, and the library is doing a great job. The people that work there are great, all the electronic things you can get on your tablet, which my wife does, which I don't know how to do. But I do have one thing that I filled out a form a couple months ago, and hopefully you might have seen it when I handed it in upstairs. The magazines, I cannot read the current issue because the current issue is checked out most of the time, and because of COVID, I guess that was the decision to have anybody check out the current issue, but I would like to have it revised the old, the old way so that anybody can read the current issue and then stay in the library until the next issue arrives, and then that it can be checked out. Thank you.
Any other comments tonight?
Hi, I'm Marsha Richardson. I'm a Downers Grove resident. I came here over a year ago to thank you most sincerely for making a safe and welcoming place for LGBTQ+ individuals. You have books, you have materials, you have programs, you have space that they feel safe in, and in this time period, we have witnessed a whole lot of concerning things happen, but one thing has remained steady is your support for marginalized individuals, and I want to say thank you very much again as the mother of a gay child, how much I appreciate you being the good allies that you are. It means a lot to me, and it means a lot to my child, even though he does not live here. Thank you from the bottom of my heart. You're doing a great job. Thank you.
All right, any other comments tonight? All right, thank you very much. We are on to item number seven, which is trustee comments. I have just a few really quick things. I just want to highlight a few things that were in the packet. One was the District 58 library card signup. I think there's like a little over 4,800 kids in the district and 4,500, over 4,500 signed up, so it's like 95% of the students, which is phenomenal. It's just, it's so impressive. It shows how much our community and families care about the library and want their kids to be able to cover the library. The other was the numbers, I don't have them all in front of me, but number of participants in programming was phenomenal. Everything I have to say is phenomenal. I'm really curious to hear about the assistive learning, listening systems, and the hearing loop. I'm curious how that's gonna work, and I'm also wanna know, like, are we thinking about how we could do, what's it called, so people can read? Like, if they were to participate in a program and the listening dispel isn't enough for them, is there any way we can get, like, something printed on the screen? I don't know what that's called, but closed captioning is what I'm trying to say. They're not watching, they're not like watching it on TV, but if someone were to be in the room and attending a program, is there any way to have that being done live? I don't know what that's called. I know we talked about it very briefly once, but this made me think about, about something like that for someone who maybe don't, a hearing aid isn't even, they need something more than just a hearing aid, like something.
Speech to text.
Speech to text. Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
And also, just one last thing, I'm really happy to hear that the updating of the personnel policy allowed a staff member, a full-time staff member to take a vacation and go see their family out of the country, because it's important. So.
I have a couple, a couple of things tagging onto what Barnali said. Boy, did the District 58 people love this library. I sat with some of them at the Downers Grove Economic Development Commission luncheon last week, and particularly Allison, they were just really singing the praises, and happened to have a state rep sitting at the table too, who, who was all ears, listening to that cooperative program to allow the, all the kids to get their library cards so much more easily. Also, congratulations to the foundation. The presentation by Dr. Dieter Grun was absolutely phenomenal. I mean, wow. There was a great turnout, and he was very impressive, and it's a perfect kind of thing for the, for the foundation to be, to be doing, so thank you so much for that program. Kudos to Matt for national coverage for him and his firm, New Yorker, Time Magazine. A star rises in our midst.
That was not planned by me.
But it was there, and we're watching. And I wanted to thank the library staff for making the mental health first aid training available to the trustees. A couple of us took it, and it was interesting and helpful and eye-opening, and that was really terrific. Finally, I did go to the library to look over all of the materials that were on the Great Decisions table at any given time. Some things may be gone because somebody has pulled them off to read them, and there were some articles that did fact-checking from some foreign press sources, you know, on the rumors about Project 2025. There was a printout from the Heritage Foundation, so I think, you know, there was, there was an attempt to, to have some balance on the materials leading up to the Great Decisions conversation. But I'm mentioning it not to get into an argument about it, because obviously, we're all hot and heavy on election stuff right now, and that's not our job, but to let you all know that several of us trustees did go and look at the materials, and we're taking those comments seriously when these kind of controversies arise in the community. That's all I've got.
At the risk of repetition, yeah, the District 58 program, I just can't say enough about it. I hear about it from a number of people in the community who I didn't think paid any attention to stuff like that, and it reminds me that people do pay attention, and I also heard about it at the Economic Development Commission luncheon. I also, kudos for the mental health first aid program. I did not attend because I had attended one before, very recently before, but it's a very valuable program, just as, you know, every young scout learns first aid, they should learn this kind of first aid as well, as should all of the rest of us. The, I also read the material, didn't read all, but I reviewed all of the items that were on the table upstairs for the Great Decisions program, and I think they were appropriate. Great Decisions is a program that is not controlled by the library. It is hosted by the library, but it's a, it's been a valuable listing at the library for many, many years. I also just wanted to make a quick comment that we are meeting in the Betty Cheever Council chambers. I meant to mention that last month when we met here for the first time. I think it's absolutely wonderful that Betty Cheever is memorialized in this room. She was the longtime mayor of this community, the first woman mayor of this community, and happened to be a personal friend of mine, and I feel goosebumps a little bit to be sitting in, especially at this podium in the Betty Cheever Council chamber, so I just wanted to mention that.
I see, thanks. First, I wanted to echo what Marty said about, and Dave about, meant the mental health first aid program. I wasn't able to attend, but I heard great things from, from library staff and from other folks who were able to go. I think that's really important, and it goes a long way towards some of the things we've been talking about as a board in terms of keeping our library safe. I also wanted to mention a program that I attended called Little E. School, a virtual program, Presentation on Misinformation and Online Scams by Dr. Daniel Simon's. It was incredible, it was, and it's very personal, there's some personal things, connections for me, and I just felt like it was a tremendous program. I'm glad that the library was, helped me find that and connected us and other community members to it. So those of you who know me and my reputation on this board are probably going to be a little bit surprised by my comments tonight. While I'm passionate about the library, I typically keep my comments fairly even keeled, impersonal, and based on data, but maybe because I'm sitting here on borrowed time, I'm gonna go out on a limb here. The idea that people could try to impugn, rally against, or take away the important community forum known as Great Decisions upset me more than just about any topic this board has taken up during my tenure. When I first learned this was gonna be a thing, I got mad. Not disappointed, not frustrated, mad, pissed off, if you will. And contrary to what my teenager may think, I don't get that mad that often, but I took a few minutes, took a few deep breaths, talked to a trusted friend, and poked a little bit at that feeling. I got curious. What was it about this particular challenge, this particular disparaging remarks that got me so worked up? It's because it's personal. I have met some amazing, smart, and inspirational people through Great Decisions, both Republicans and Democrats. These are folks that embody the idea of lifelong learning, and I'm proud to know them and to call them my friends. I come away from those meetings more energized, more optimistic, and with a greater understanding of some really complex topics, and I know I'm not the only one. I've been looking for an antidote to the toxic polarization I see in social media and elsewhere, and this group is it for me. They are the type of people we need more than this world. They are humble, they are earnest, and they try very hard to solicit and understand different opinions on these very nuanced topics. And Ron, the facilitator of the group, epitomizes what it means to be a teacher and a leader. The way he was treated this week was shameful. So the idea that individuals who haven't taken the time to get to know the group, why it exists, how it operates, are trying to cast it in a negative light, that was at the heart of my angry response. So now I'm less mad, and I'm more inspired, and maybe more on-brand for me, I have a really specific and rational recommendation. I invite any of you, all of you, and specifically anyone who's accusing the Great Decisioners of some kind of ill-intent or political theater, to come to one of our discussions. Talk to some of the regular attendees, stay on topic, make suggestions, contribute to the conversation, get curious. Read the materials, choose ones you might not otherwise read. If you keep an open mind, I think you'll be pleasantly surprised. I found this group to be welcoming, thoughtful, and a positive space for anyone to participate in discussions upon the topics of importance to all Americans. Whatever our party affiliation, the conversation is rooted in respect and oriented toward learning. I want everyone to experience this kind of interaction, to know it is possible, and to bring that kind of energy and engagement to other parts of our community.
All right, thank you, trustee Doherty. I just have a few things. My list has gotten shorter now that everyone's stolen my thunder a little bit, but a couple things that weren't much, and I do want to mention, are the reading club numbers. They were phenomenal as usual. What was very impressive was the number of people that came back for their second and third prizes, which means there's, you know, that many more engaged students throughout the summer, not just there for the first time, so that was wonderful. Mental health first aid training was excellent. I was very glad that I was able to make it. Truly wonderful to see our staff members and also other members of the community take that mental health first aid training, so thank you, Jen, for setting that up and facilitating it. The District 58 card program continues to be phenomenal, 95% enrollments, more than I could have ever expected, so congratulations to the staff and the continued work involved with that program. I also want to thank the admin team and everyone involved with the policy updates that have been taking place throughout this year. We have one more on deck to be voted on and discussed tonight. Though it's a very tedious process, but a very important one, so thank you for the time and all the work with that. As always, I want to welcome all of you to check out the website, District, or I'm sorry, Downers Grove Public Library is probably one of the more transparent public facilities you'll find. There is the work plan tracker that tracks all the progress, the strategic plan, as well as all the FOIA information and minutes and a lot of information, so please check that out. And another program will be coming up in October that has been in the works for quite some time, that's the Human Library. That starts on October 16th. It's on the cover of your Discovery's copy, so please check that out. Again, it's October 16th, and it is another innovative program. Really happy to see Downers Grove take part in that. And that was it for me. All right, any other last-minute comments? All right. We are on to item eight, library director's report.
So if you haven't been upstairs at the library in the last couple of days, you'll want to make it up there. We have done a shift of the teen shelving, and so we have moved some things around to make the teen area a more defined space and are working toward those upgrades for our teen area, and this is a, our next major step, and it's just been fantastic. If you look in the board packet at the statistics of teen participation in our programs, it has just been phenomenal, and so this is the next step in making sure our teens have what they need in the library. We are also undergoing a tiny bit of construction in our café area. We are currently changing vendors for our vending machines. As you know, there have been vending machines in the library's cafés since 2014. We're going with a new vending company, and they are going to put in a third machine. We are replacing the tabletop Keurig with a full coffee vending machine, so thank, thank goodness for our building operations director, Ian Nor, who is doing all of that in-house because he can. Let's see, this month, we did have five FOIAs. Four of them are done. One, we have a pending clarification with the requester. Three of those FOIAs were about Great Decisions, and again, it is a volunteer and participant-led program that fulfills our civic engagement goal from our strategic plan, and starting in 2023, this group went ahead and went beyond the Foreign Policy Association's, Foreign Policy topics. They put out a listing of eight topics every year in the beginning of the year with all of the supporting documentation. Well, this group of ours that has been going so strong since COVID decided that they wanted to do topics of local interest, and the group themselves suggested and voted on those topics. The moderator, as Carissa alluded to earlier, Ron and Norma, they are volunteers from the community. Great Decisions, we have had a Great Decisions group at the library since 1989. We actually started with the League of Women Voters, and the AAUW were involved at one point, and this group has just, it just kept going, even when the League of Women Voters' volunteer moderator retired, and they didn't have someone to step into that role, one of the longtime participants stepped into that role, and so it has been wonderful to see that group. Yesterday's program had 43 attendees, which was our best attendance since COVID started, and that program does happen in a hybrid model, so if you're unable a hybrid model. So if you're unable to come physically into the library, you can join us by Zoom. And again, summer reading, our participation was amazing this year. We were up all around. We are just continuing at that very high level. Our, our kids program, the Storytime, also held on Tuesday morning at about the same time as the Great Decisions group, had eighty-seven people in attendance. And that is becoming a regular occurrence for us to have that eighty to ninety, ninety people in the room for Storytime. Absolutely astounding. I don't know how the staff do it. They are amazing. And just on the safety and security front, I want you to notice in the board packet that in August of last year, we had twenty-four incidents. In August of this year, we had ten. And one final note, I did want to let the board and everyone know that we, we did unfortunately have to say farewell to one of the members of our management team, Lucas McKeever, our access services manager, absolutely phenomenal individual who did so much for us in the years that he was with us. Unfortunately, the Swan Consortium lured him away from us with a fully remote job. So you can't compete with that. But overall, thank you so much. And, and also just wanted to say thank you to our partners at NAMI for the mental health first aid training. They are amazing. And the, this time and the last time that we ran it, we were able to do it through grants that NAMI had secured. So it was at no cost to the library. And that's it.
All right. Item number nine is new business. Item A, Library Services Policy Update.
It's a lot. Okay. This is one of the longest policies that we have because it incorporates services. This is everything from getting a library card to how do you, how to use a meeting room or the media lab, computer use. It has everything. I will say that we did find, thank you, Swatna, who is a better editor than I am. Swatna found that there was a, a misspelling in the meeting rooms, conference rooms, and study rooms introductions where it said material status instead of marital status in our, so we have corrected that in our version for your approval. And if you have any questions, I did try to, to kind of summarize what the changes were in, in the tracker. The attorney did make some significant changes, particularly around kind of First Amendment sorts of things with the meeting rooms and the, and the confidentiality. And then there's an even shorter summary at the start. The subs, the three bullet points of substantive changes were attorney rewrites of confidentiality and circulation records, reference and readers advisory, home delivery service, public internet access, and notary sections. We also completely reworked the structure of the meeting room, conference room, and study room sections, and we added the media lab section to the policy. And that's all I have.
It's very thorough, I would say. I mean, I was like, oh, I wouldn't have, I would have never thought of that. But, you know, I mean, everything that you could imagine as being a potential issue or potentially needing clarification has been taken care of in this.
And it's very much a group effort. I work on it, our, the admin team works on it, then the department managers and our equity advisory team before it ever goes to the attorney, and then it comes back to you. So there are a lot of eyes on these policies as we.
And I for one appreciated getting it plenty early in head of this meeting. So yeah, I actually had time to look through it.
This is not the most exciting part of the, of the library policy manual, which is not exactly an exciting document in itself. But, and I just thank you so much for being, having so many eyes on the document, including Swatna's who caught the one typo. But it's, the policy manual is very important. And a number of times in the past several years, we've reviewed it, changed it, updated it, enforced it. And thank you for staff for going through it line by line. Do you like a motion?
Sure.
I move that the, that we approve the library services policy updates as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the business services policy update. Any other comments from our trustees? Does this need a roll call call? Yes, right. No?
No, no policy doesn't matter.
All those in favor of approving the library services policy as presented, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? And all those abstaining. All right. So the library services policy update has been approved. Thank you again for all of your work on this. Item B is the library director evaluation process. This is a discussion item.
Discussion. Krista is leaving. Now what? How do we do this?
For those of you who don't know, Krista amazingly synthesizes all of our comments into this, like she does everything else. We all give our notes and comments and what we want to do and what we think, and she makes this beautiful thing for us to, and now we're all gonna look at each other and, and go like this.
Is there anyone that's just like, yes, tag me in. I will take this up.
So I will point out, I, I think I'm pretty, and if I didn't, and I just like didn't press send on this, I did send like a overview of like the overall process because I, we all forget every year. It's like, okay, when, when does this part happen? What happens at that point? When do the emails go out to us? So I do, I do have like an outline of that to document our current process. Now, if you guys decide to change process, then cool, but like, at least, at least there's that so that you're not, if, if you do decide to raise your hands tonight, like there is some, there is some guidance.
We have a template to go by.
There is, yeah, and the template, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's, it, the hardest part is, as Brenna said, is just like taking everyone's comments and seeing, I tried really hard to like make sure every, I just, part of everyone's specific comments, their voice came through because I thought that was really important. And then there were sometimes when people said something so similar that we needed to, that it was just kind of a matter of melding them. It's not, it's not, it's not as magical as, as you're making it sound, but.
Seems magical.
I want to reiterate one other thing in terms of the process for our, our assessing director performance. The director is the only library employee whose performance we assess. That's our job. That's statutory. Anything else having to do, do with feedback on performance for any other library employee does not come through the board, but is the, the director or particular manager's responsibility. I certainly don't have a problem with the process that we've been, been using.
Well, I, not only don't have a problem with it, I think it's an excellent process that, you know, I've been around for a while. And we've had some other process, processes in the, in the past. And this one, I think, is, is both more thorough and fairer and balanced and all of those good words. So I would suggest, urge us to continue to use this, this process.
And last year, it was tweaked to make sure that it's tracking with the strategic plan and equity plan and so forth. So, you know, everything gets hopefully tied together.
Oh, yeah. Well, we, we, we tweak the, the use of it, but the, the basic structure, though, I think, is, is good. And we can tweak it if we feel times have changed or something. But right now, I think it's solid.
All right. Well, I will go ahead and volunteer begrudgingly to take this project on. I think Krista's done a great job kind of setting this up for success for future years. She left a little bit of a legacy, so I appreciate it. And we'll probably be reaching out to her to double check that I'm doing everything right. So I will share more via email regarding kind of the next steps and everything. So good luck to me. Any other discussion points? Any other comments about this process?
No, thank you, though.
Yes, thank you.
To both of you.
All right. Item C is future board training. So we have kind of thrown around the idea of, you know, continued education as a, a group. Generally, and I know this was addressed earlier in the year, generally, we canceled the December meeting because there's not really a lot of pending action items. And we've either just not had a meeting, or I think last year, we used it just for the purposes of evaluation discussion. But we did talk about, I feel like earlier in the year, we talked about potentially using that December meeting date as a, a group training or a group treat of some sort. So I wanted to get some thoughts or feedback, any specific topics that would be helpful?
I think, I think it would be really good to have, since, since Krista is stepping down and Maddie's new and Marty is new-ish, especially training on the Equity Decision Making Tool, how we use that, how the staff uses it, and how we should be, since we, we did something on it, but it's been, you know, eighteen, nineteen months since we just did a basic visiting of the tool itself and how it's used. So I would love to figure out a way that we could do something, something discussing that, if possible.
I think that's a great idea, yeah. There are a couple of other topics that I've kicked, kicked around that would probably take more time to put together. One, one is some refresher on parliamentary procedure. I actually checked a copy of Robert's out of the library, if you'd please go. And the other is, and it certainly is one of the things that, that, that I need more background on is the whole library finance mechanism. You know, I, that, that's something that, that part of my brain is not always as gauged in as it should be.
More like the, the levy process?
Yeah, the levy process, yeah, how we tie into the village finances and so forth. And I've gone through a couple of cycles of that, but I'd still like to get a little more nitty, nitty gritty on all of that, too. So those would be my suggestions. But I like the idea of, of doing something on the equity tool because I think that's something that, that, you know, I haven't had a lot of exposure to and that can be put together relatively quickly by the end of the year.
Any other topics?
Well, the, the subject of Robert's Rules is another exciting thing that, I think it's important for board members to understand the very basics of Robert's Rules. To a great extent, I suspect we do at this point. But to the extent that anyone is a little uncomfortable, I think that those sections of it could be, could be brought up and chatted about. I wouldn't want to spend a whole evening on that. I don't think it would be necessary. The fundamental purpose behind Robert's Rules of Order is fairness.
Yeah.
Everyone within the governing group has an opportunity to speak and has attended, an opportunity to get a motion on the floor. And a motion needs to be on the floor in order to have discussion. And there, there are very basic things like that in the process for amending and so forth, which can be very complicated. But in a small group like ours, it doesn't have to be. And so I would not be in favor of rigorously enforcing all of Robert's Rules of Order. But I mean, the, it's a book this thick. I have a personal copy.
Yeah, I feel like once you pair it.
Autograph一本是Robert的书.
And we don't, we don't need it. And it's, and Robert's Rules itself says that a small group can ignore most of what's in this book as long as you maintain fairness and everyone has an opportunity. So, but I'm open to, I'm open to some of the other ideas. And we can talk a little bit between now and then.
Perfect. So we're, we're feeling like December would be, the December meeting day would be kind of.
Yeah, and it's, and it's kind of early in the month, too. So I think we'll probably all be here. Sometimes I'm gone by the third week or so, but they were, the meeting on our schedule is the eleventh. And so that works well for me this year.
Two other things that had come up previously in discussions was board member roles and responsibilities and team building.
What was the?
Team building.
Team.
Just to go back to the Robert's Rules thing really quick, I, when I first became a board member, I attended a presentation by the woman who wrote Robert's Rules for Dummies. And it was, it was presented by Rails, I think. It was a, it was a library presentation. So I wonder if there's a recording of that somewhere, or if she has a website or something? Because it was, to Dave's point, we don't, we don't need like a full on like cover to cover. We need, we need the dummies for.
No, I also, I also have a copy of the dummies for. And it's about this thing.
Yeah, it's much on her.
All right. Great. So I have a, a good list of things to kind of work on. I'll circle back with Julie and kind of try and put something together that covers.
And there are some, some great consultants out there.
And for the application of members of the public that are here, we all regularly do other training too, online through various library organizations or public service or, and public official organizations, you know, some in person, some, you know, at home. So it's not something that just suddenly pops up at the end of every year. It's an ongoing process for all of us.
All right. Perfect. All right. I'll circle back with Julie and we'll, you guys updated. All right.
Just a different, slightly off topic, but also kind of relevant. Did you guys want to talk about the November board meeting and attendance?
Yes. So our, currently on our calendar, we have a November thirteenth scheduled meeting for our monthly meeting. Two of us are unable to make it. So we were kind of looking at, I know I got to talk to a few of you before the meeting, but I guess, Dave, are you available by chance for November twentieth instead of the thirteenth?
Yes.
Okay. And Krista? I don't know if you'll see.
Oh, wait, wait.
I will say no.
I've got two different calendars here and I apologize. No, I cannot be here on the November twentieth. But if the rest of you can be here, I'm, I'm sure you can survive without me. But I am, I am going to be out of town on a, on a business trip the nineteenth and the twentieth.
Four and four.
Yeah, we, we can revisit when the new person is appointed.
Yeah, I scheduled that trip around. But, but it's okay. It's okay. I can't change it now.
All right. So if you guys can maybe just pencil in November twentieth if possible, and then we'll, we'll kind of revisit as well. All right. Item number ten is unfinished business, of which we do not have any. And then item number eleven, we do have an executive session today regarding employment. We will be adjourning in closed session. So this is kind of the end of our public session of our meeting. So thank you all for coming. We need a motion to enter into executive session. So moved. All right. Second, all those in favor of moving into executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say nay. And all those abstaining. All right. So we are moving into executive session at seven forty-nine PM. Again, thank you all for attending and for your comments and feedback as always. Have a safe and lovely night. Beautiful afternoon, so.